Shane, you're all right?
Yeah.
I saw you driving. I was in the truck. Right there.
You know, I I don't remember a time in my life when they weren't around, you know, like, so I was there not really to the best of capacity.
Yeah, appreciate you being there.
But you're all right.
I'm good. How are you?
Good, sir. Good.
Oh, yes. I can't get a four. I did it.
So my neighbor across the street wants to do the same thing. But he's got such a short driveway. Because how wide it is. Like me, I'm a twenty-three feet. I can't angle it out. I was like, I know I've got plenty of.
Yeah. One of those things.
So, but I didn't see.
It's a beautiful day today.
Long time no see.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, around the corner here.
Been years.
Still trying to get your way home, right?
And then that, I gotta gate shut. I had, that was all wood.
Oh, I gotta sit. I have.
On the clock all the time, right? What did you do?
Judges are still. Terry Austin. They haven't.
He's in a long time.
Want to keep coming in there really good?
Yeah. He, he.
Lots of central football.
Seriously? Really good?
It's gonna be something.
Yeah. Hey, man.
You know, I mean, it's like, the only thing I can think about is it would be a very long trip. Yeah, so that's a good point.
Uh?
Well, we, you know, we all, we just.
Didn't get it? You're gonna buy that.
But you.
Or they can only say.
You know.
Think.
This is.
Yeah.
I know.
It's six o'clock. We called November twenty twenty-two, council made the order. Have a moment of silence for. Thank you. Let you all wait a second. Pleasure, ladies, please.
Let you just clarify, the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Willie.
Bob Jones.
I'm here.
Francis Skaggs.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Jeff Ab.
Here.
Okay, we've had, for the approval of the minutes, we've had a chance, I think everybody's had a chance to look at them. Any questions, comments, or corrections?
Make your motion to approve Minnesota prior meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Treasurers, clerk treasurers report.
Okay, first of all, I don't have the actual clerk treasurer's report because we had a couple of outbreaks of COVID in our office here in the last couple of weeks, so a little shorthand. But the accounts payable voucher is pretty strong, you'll see. We bought our power from, as we always do, from MPa, and it was quite high because of the heat. This is actually six hundred two thousand is for September, it runs its rear, so you guys remember we had pretty hot. It'll probably be that way this next month, but, you know, luckily we did good, so other than that, everything's fine.
I'm not gonna ask for approval of claims. Anything else, Willie? You need approval on any of that?
No.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna move forward. Department reports, chief, so Dan, please.
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Good. As you can see on the, the report there, of course, I've lost all internet, so. Good old technology, but anyways, as you can see, we did a total of a hundred and forty-nine total runs this last month. It was kind of a busy month for us. As you can see, we did a lot in Anderson for mutual aid, so we went up there quite a bit. I wanna also, I wanna thank the town as well as the police department for the assistance in the funeral today for Tim Schnapp, so. Been a long day, so, yeah, it was. Lost a good guy for the community and stuff, as well as from the fire department, the ambulance service and stuff, so other than that, I'm going to entertain any questions that you might have. My report is very short and sweet, to the point, we haven't done a lot this month, just because we've been trying to do the hiring process for the fire territory. We interviewed the folks, we've got it selected down to nine potential candidates, pending further testing as far as doctors' physicals that we have, so hopefully we'll get them scheduled for working with public safety medical, to get them in to see the doctor, so. With that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chief Park.
Good evening. October somewhat busy, we started off the month with the Pendleton Pride event, went smoothly, we had some protesters, but after a little chit chat between myself and Captain Trailer and them, y'all got on the same page, and so the event went smooth, and I'm sure they're gonna do it again next year. October seventeenth was the last day to submit job applications for one of the two positions you guys have discussed with us about hiring. We received a total of nineteen applications, which is somewhat equal to the sheriff's department, how many they get? It was close, yeah, within twenty twenty-one, or two or three apps, so we had nineteen, which is actually a good turnout. Unfortunately, only eight then showed up for the physical and written test, so either their spouse got to them and said, hey, I don't want you to be a policeman, or they went back to their day job, or whatever the decision was, but, and over those eight, we whittled them down to four, which we're doing background checks on now, and hopefully we'll be able to pull one from those four.
Chief, if you go, pull one.
Yep.
Process starts over.
Yep, and I've had people ask me that, and, and I've used the term, I don't just want heartbeats, I want a good officer for the town penalty, so if we can't find a good candidate, we'll reopen the application process. The slot cameras, we had a press release, it was on TV, all kinds of fancy stuff, but we're now getting the permitting to get those installed. Just the other day, it helped in an apprehension of a stolen car here in Pendleton, and as we move ahead with those, I think you'll see a lot more crime being solved. It's a good tool, we're kinda excited. We also have gotten our watch guard body cameras now, so the guys are wired for sound, great pieces of equipment for evidence, we haven't had them for a year due to software and hardware difficulties with the other ones we had, so we've now rolled these out to the guys, we're all learning as we go, so. The other night, we had a pursuit come through town, Officer Eevee, because we haven't had these in a while, he jumped out, forgot to hit the button, and, but these have what's called a record after the fact, so you can go back thirty seconds prior to the activation and get that footage, so like right now, it's recording, deleting, recording, deleting, and it's not until I hit this button that it goes back that thirty seconds. And the reason for that is, perfect example, Eevee jumped out, stop sticks, he's running around the back of the car, he's getting the stop sticks out, here comes a car at him a hundred miles an hour, he throws it out. Well, unfortunately, the last thing you remember in doing all that is pushing this little butt, and we were able to go back to that pre-record and got the whole thing, and he did a great job, nobody was hurt, got the stop sticks deployed, bad guy hit him. And so that was a good thing. Seven hundred and twelve total dispatched incidents for the month of October, and that's about it, if you have any questions.
Do we want to go into great detail for Lucas? I'm kidding, he knows.
He's talking about the car theft suspect that I single-handedly, or, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Lucas, do you want to tell him about that, or you just wanna?
No, because I'm worried that the head will get set out the door.
All I have to say is, there were drones, dogs, troopers, sheriff's deputies, and Lucas, and I'm the one that got. All I have.
Move, move him right along, Judge. I had to say something.
Okay.
Counsel. Let's, let's go for the thirty thousand foot situation, just to give a note, because there's a lot of things that have to be done, that should be brought up, the speed is what goes in as we get to go down the pipe. We have, basically, through the resolution, dissolved the court, and Madison County Courts, Indiana State Secretary of State, Office of Judicial Administration have been all notified officially. We've also spoken to the Deputy Director of Court Service, a also individual handles all the cases in the, I wanna say, how long are you supposed to keep them, where are you supposed to keep them, and what's gonna happen to the caseload, what's gonna happen with us, all the way down to the cluster agency, how will that be handled there? We haven't made determination, we could be working with the prosecutor directly as far as how the case is gonna be handled, and how his plan was on the other, other court that has been shut down to do the same similar process with this. The only thing that's been open, there's been discussions and questioning, which you have some information of given to you relative to a ordinance bureau, and that's a possibility, as well as also there's possibility, if we want to do it in a local agreement for the ordinance bureau, that could be done also, that maintains some control here in Pendleton, although another judge, probably would be Elwood, is interested in doing that, they currently do that for some of the other, other city and towns in the area, they basically have a contract to handle that part of it. And, we've made up a list, we've sat down with our, everybody we know, and start getting all the different pieces we have to address, to be able to shut this thing down effectively, and make sure that there isn't any hiccups in the storage, and where the files are gonna go. Entertain questions?
Just for my record, the court will still be going on this next year, it'll be December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Six.
There'll be a series of actually physical paper moves some places, as well as computer hard drive information, too. And, like, if, to do, to Jeff and too, because he was asked to back up some of the same relative to the ordinance bureau, some of the steps, too, and appreciate making sure that he said the same things, they said the same thing, so I guess, you know, get two people agree, we'll go with it. So that's been a good thing.
Questions or comments from the judge? Nice to.
Thank you.
Good evening. Not much to add, other than what's in my report. We did winterize all the restrooms this week, getting ready for winter, so the restroom at the front of the park by the playground is the only one that's open at this point. North Forty Restrooms closed, all the sports complex restrooms are closed, and the one by the community building's closed. We've had groups and families out decorating areas in the park this past week while the weather's been nice. All those displays will be on this weekend for Christmas in Pendleton, and then they'll go dark until December first, and then they'll be on nightly December first through the first of the year, so. Other than that, any questions for me?
Questions, comments for her?
Okay, the Santa Claus and the tent over by the shoulder, what is that?
That's the Kiwanis, you'll have to ask them.
Okay.
They're responsible for that.
I thought it was a homeless Santa.
That, that may be the theme for them this year, I don't know.
Stay tuned. I drove over there and looked from the road.
And maybe it's completely different when it's lit up, I'm not sure.
And what were you doing today? You had the park shut down.
Restriping parking spaces at the front and at the community building.
You have to do that.
AV striping and seal coating.
Sorry, okay, thank you.
And Psalms reopens this week? They opened Tuesday. Tuesday. Yeah, they are open now. Awesome. Yep.
Hey, they put their own new contract with them?
No, that'll be, it's on our agenda for the November park board meeting, so. And they will be present there.
Very good, thank you.
So.
Any planning, Hannah?
All right, you've got our building permit summary in front of you, if you've got any questions on that, just let me know. Not too much, as far as our HPC design guidelines, I just finished today the preliminary draft for that, it needed updating with some new best practices, make it an interactive document. The only other thing is the business park trail, we do have banning, working on getting a contract together for that, so, once we get that finalized and sent to In-N-Out, that's gonna be a really fun project. Other than that, any questions about your report?
Questions, comments, or input? Thank you.
Thank you.
Shut.
So just some major activities, I've got good news on North Potten Avenue, they were finally able to pour concrete, there was a concrete shortage, and that sort of delayed it, other than upfront, when Frontier didn't tell us they had a major cable line running through there, and they forgot to market, and our guys cut it, so. So that's good news, they're gonna probably do asphalt next week. So you're gonna see it opening up pretty quick, North Potten Avenue. Cardi Drain, we've done a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, that came in under budget, if you remember, and we've also walked the grounds with them, and they're ready to get started. The other thing is, starting in December, we'll kick off, bring in some of the groups that are involved in the aquatic center, and we're gonna do a marketing study to see if it's feasible, if the town can afford, the community, I should say, can afford to have aquatics, aquatic center. If you could go to the next slide. So just, there's a lot of concrete there, just that, that's some of the forms that weren't poured yet, that's the culvert there at Pendleton Avenue. The guys did tell me when they were ripping out the old one, that it was definitely needed to be replaced, it was in bad shape, the fact it hadn't collapsed earlier, we're, we're very lucky. And then, as far as our departments, first thing I want to say is Zane finally passed his test, it was a team effort. They helped him get ready and steady, and the whole water department did, so now we've got a new water treatment plant operator, that puts us up to three. It wasn't too long ago, we were at one, which is not a good situation. The guys have done a really good job with the leaf pickup, I think what, Mother Nature is on our side, you know, sometimes it'll drag on for more than a month because of the high winds, and the fact we had warm, warm fall, when they, when they were ready to come off, they came off, and the guys stayed on top of it. They did a real good job getting ready for Saturday, Christmas in Pendleton. Electric department has had a lot of consistent callouts, most of it's not, most of it's due to the high winds, as you know, we've had quite a few days of high winds lately, and then Tracy was proactive and, and went out and got some more training on the billing software. Proud of, proud of her for doing that, so I haven't, unless anybody's got any questions.
Questions, comments? Go straight to new business. First one's urban enforcement report, Carol.
So this is our annual report to the town council for our, our committee, and I've got Joe here, one of our committee members, we now have five members, which is allowing us to actually get a quorum and be able to actually accomplish some things that we weren't able to do early on. So a couple of awards that we received this year, we, based on last year, we have the twenty twenty-one Tree City USA Award, and we also received a Gold Leaf Award for our Recovery Tree Project. Projects that we worked on this year is our annual Arbor Day celebration, we plant a tree at the elementary school at Oak Tree, and we have the fourth grade class come out, we give them an opportunity to learn some benefits of trees, try to give them some information, and then they see that the tree's been planted, that's something that they can feel part of. We also were able to help select the trees for the Franklin Street project, and so the seventeen trees, we tried to pick a variety of different, some flowering in the spring, some not, different color flowers, different color leaves in the fall, and I'm really excited over the next few years to see how that, I think that's gonna be one of our best streets that we have in the community, when those trees start to grow. We also launched a Facebook page, and if anybody's interested in joining that, it's the Pendleton, Indiana Urban Forestry. We felt like there was just a lack of understanding or knowledge, seems like everybody I talked to didn't even know that this committee existed, so we're hoping that that's going to bring some awareness, and also so people know that it's a resource for them, anything related to trees, whether it's their own personal trees, how to take care of them. We want to be a resource for them, so we're posting periodically just information, various types of information, and trying to just build some interest about our committee. One other thing that we have, that I don't think people are aware of, is our tree keeper online inventory, and that's something that you can ask access through the town's website. And that's something that you can ask access through the town's website. If you go to our committee, there's a tab that you can actually see all the trees that we've inventoried where they are. And you can get all kinds of information about the benefits, what kinds of trees they are, really has a ton of information that's that's interesting. And then we try to keep that updated as as the as trees are removed, as trees are added and so forth, so that we can keep that inventory up to date. So our goals for next year, we have a few already. We've got a two thousand sixteen tree management plan that needs to be updated. And we need to want to update our approved tree list. As people want to plant trees, we want to make sure we get a good variety. That we get the right type types of trees that are going to be successful, trying to emphasize native trees if we can. And then we all again will apply for the Tree City USA Award. And a new project that that is going to come up too is we're working with eight other or seven other communities in Madison County and Denise has been working with them in the next fall, we're going to as the entire community, as an entire county, try to plant two hundred trees. So that'll be something that we are going to partner with the other communities to do. So obviously we are grateful for the street departments, the electric department, the clerk's office. We're doing all of the work as we come up with good ideas and we have some other resources as well. So I think everybody has a copy of all that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer and appreciate your support.
I just want to say thank you for reviving urban forestry and changing the structure. You guys can have a quorum now. You guys have really done a great job this year, so I appreciate it. And I know that the neighbors on Franklin Street loved the project and having a say in the trees, the selection process and the door hangers and all of that. I got some really great feedback from that. So.
That was that was a win, I think, because when you ask people what they would like to plant, then it's, we were, I think we were able to give all the requests. So that was, yeah.
So thank you guys.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that on.
Thanks, Carol. Ordinance twenty two dash thirty eight amended UDO.
So if there's any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, we keep getting less and less things that I'm noticing. You know, I think I probably read that document once a week. Just with going through it with everyday work and finding less and less things to update or correct or clarify.
It's a living document.
It is, it is.
And planning commission does a great job of staying on top of everything. Yeah. So thank you for your diligent attention to this thing because it's it's overwhelming for the rest of us. The planning commission acts like it's no big deal, but for me, I'm like, oh. Yeah, no big deal. Light reading.
No other comments or questions? Or this twenty two dash thirty eight amending the UDO. Can I have a motion in a second place?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Or this twenty two dash thirty eight. Or that's twenty two dash thirty nine, South Madison Fire Territory Fire Inspection Fees and Fines. Chief?
How are you? This actually, I'm not sure if the email got passed along because I know there were some issues with illnesses upstairs, but I had some things come up on this that I wanted to re-investigate as far as the fee schedule goes. So I requested Karen to have it removed from the agenda until later date. But I don't know if that got passed on to you guys. So.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. That way we know it's right.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all. It's removed.
It makes the. Full table.
Just spend the rules and double vote.
We're okay.
I'll make a motion to table chief's request for this ordinance to come back in December and review.
Have a motion to table. I'll second. Bob second. Change Bob. All favor of table in this ordinance twenty two dash thirty nine till December. Say aye.
Aye.
Both saying, thank you. Resolution twenty two dash fourteen, additional appropriation, LIT public safety.
This one might as well.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So what this was, was this is the request.
This is for a mistake where the ambulance bill never got sent.
Okay.
Clerk's office and this is.
Yeah, because this is the first time I've seen this.
Yeah, this is that new view. I'm sorry.
This is internal.
Yeah, okay, got you. All right, got you. Okay. Because I was like, don't mean. Those numbers look odd.
He's already gotten the forty four thousand.
Yeah, this was during COVID and so ambulance, somebody didn't send the bill, whatever.
All right.
This is correct to add. Make sure it is.
Well, it's been paid, correct? If this is just moving the money to that line item, correct, Willie?
Yes.
Okay, we paid the bill. I didn't.
Oh, come on. Okay, I need a motion to resolution twenty two dash fourteen.
So moved.
Say aye. I'm sorry. All in favor of resolution twenty two dash fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Karen. Authorization of lawsuit of rent con, Jeff?
Briefly. City or town hired rent con to provide services to various business owners from the side. Investigation receiving very reasonable complaints from the affected business owners and our inability to work out any kind of settlement with either bond or the company that did it. I'm asking, based on discussion with town manager, redevelopment conditions, that the town authorized lawsuit against rent con to recover any money can to reimburse through the town, the property owners that have had to either endure or repair substantial.
Any questions or comments? This is just get this going.
Thing that I always get asked if I file a suit on behalf of a public agency, so who authorized you to do that?
Yes, that's all it is.
Yep, yep. Town council on November tenth.
So rent con still solving.
Solving, I don't know, but they, when this first, when I first started my investigation, I was told they filed bankruptcy. That's not true. They're not, they're not, they're not the Pacer system as having done. They not getting too much into the weeds of litigation that will be seeking the bond.
Which they had.
They had.
Okay, all right. Okay. Make a motion.
Motion.
To authorize our town lawyer to pursue rent con. So move.
I'll say it.
Thanks, Bob. Shane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next one is the med bill contract. Everything about the fire department. I'll tell you. Lot of work being going in on this. One that the chief asked to table and this med bill contract, trying to get everything correct.
Correct. Yeah. Med bill, basically what med bill is, is our billing company that we use for EMS. So we take a patient to the hospital, they get a patient care report, they do all the billing. So it is completely outsourced. Then we receive the nominal fees from them doing a billing and collections and stuff. This company takes care of everything going forward. Current Pendleton Emergency Ambulance Corporation uses this company. So with the new South Mass Fire Territory PEA in the transition and stuff, we're going to continue to use those folks in med bill and carrying on the continuation of the contract that we're under currently. So the continuation or the continuance of this was the percentage, we got the negotiation and the couple line items taken out that med bill wanted in there. So any party can basically end the term at any time. And then the percentage that is currently being paid to med bill, which is five point five percent. That's going forward for the term of the contract. So instead of six point five.
How long this is?
Five years, I believe.
Pardon me?
Five years.
Okay.
I believe it's five years. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, med bill is continuous, but we will have it January one going forward for five years since we'll be providing the insurance.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or comments? Yeah, chief on that, we've been up a long time with the volunteer now changing to territory. On of course you have the cost incurred with that and they do good work. I don't question that at all. I guess the question in my mind is why can't we just absorb that, avoid the fees and bill directly to individuals from the territory?
Manpower and and manpower and and legal and legal aspects of it because med bill deals directly with Medicare and Medicaid. And if there's any changes in Medicare and Medicaid, they take care of all of that.
Covers.
And it covers us with any type of litigation as far as that.
Okay.
George.
Yeah, I know. I know. I worked for.
Good move.
And that's, I was with a department that did in-house billing and I can tell you those folks, it's it's a lot for them to go to classes every year. And if there's a, like I said, a new law that comes out, they got to know and it changes all their billing and stuff. These folks take care of it. We don't even know anything about it.
Okay.
I got a question on this. This goes to the fire territory, correct? This all has a hundred percent to the fire territory?
Yes.
So does this anything have to do with the town? Like we have no, we have no say in this, correct? I just, I'm asking.
The provider.
Provider unit.
This agreement?
Yeah.
We, yes, the contract itself is town of Pendleton through our the fire protection territory. It also implicates our fiscal officer. For that reason, I think it's best that.
Okay, I just, I just, you know, we got a fire board.
Through the fire territory.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but aren't we just authorizing Mr. Nodine to sign for this?
Yes, so will the, so will the board.
Right. Fire territory board.
The fire territory board signed and there's, they actually ended up leaving a blank line for council president to sign if he does wish to sign or leave it up to the fire territory board to sign it as a whole. They, they said, we'll just leave a blank line item. You can have whoever you want to sign it. So.
We'll do it with the fire territory board and the council.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so we need a.
To approve the contract.
Okay, have a motion to approve the med bill contract.
So moved.
Same. Thank you. Both of you. Have a motion to approve the fire territory med bill contract. All favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, oh, same. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chris.
Yes.
While you're here, which sign is so all we know we have left is the fire territory board chat.
Okay.
We have a question. Did you, did you end up voting on the additional preparation?
Yes.
Yeah.
The forty four for the line item for the ambulance.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. I like the ambulance bill from twenty twenty.
Public comments?
Chad, I'd like to amend the agenda for tonight. I like to discuss the art funds that Scott had a discussion with, with the police department. I had Karen today and I did kind of briefly discuss with you just a little bit ago about earmarking a hundred thousand dollars for the police department for equipment and the new hires for their equipment for next year using our funds for that. Scott, did you want to ski? Chief Mark? That'd be great.
So as you guys are all aware, our equipment budget for next year was zeroed out with the intent of using the art funds. With that being said, without getting that approved, in my opinion, tonight, we're not going to be able to move forward with our hiring. We have to have the money to equip whoever our new hire is. So I've got documentation showing my estimate, just a fully outfitted new officer with every little thing they're going to need at twenty seven thousand apiece. So that helps for the breakdown of the hundred is essentially twenty seven for one officer, twenty seven for the second officer. That's going to be coming later next year. And then roughly twenty thousand just for our equipment as we do for the year. And then our hope is that we're going to be able to purchase new duty handguns for next year as well, during next year.
What's the first twenty seven thousand?
The officer number one. Yes, the one that we're doing the process for right now. And then the second twenty seven is.
Twenty seven thousand four.
It's the equipment with his.
Equip. Uniform. Gun, taser, body cam, vest, all of that. I've got a breakdown spreadsheet if you all would need it. Those were kind of separate things.
Okay.
So twenty seven for one, twenty seven for two, the roughly twenty for our equipment. Then our hope is to get some new duty handguns. We've had, I believe, two that have broken this year. Sergeant Isaacs, who's our firearms instructor, just had to make repairs on. We shoot a lot. My opinion is never enough because I enjoy shooting. But we're hard on our guns just because of our profession. So like my personal weapons, they're fine. They're probably older than this one. But we're hard on our guns. The worst thing we can have is a gun that we don't know is broken, broke. And then it's, we need it. So we also need money for those too.
Now that is what you and I talk.
Yeah, so I need to wait till the second Thursday of every month to buy this. Or flashlight.
No, that's fine.
I do the vast majority of the equipment, uniform orders for us. What would be the ideal scenario for me if you were to, if you choose to give us some money is somehow label it to be police equipment and clothing. We know it's outfit our new officers. I get that. But having it all kind of encompassed into the same thing, not going to run into an issue of having to come and ask you guys at meetings all the time.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to make one more comment. Scott, there's one that's been tracking expenditures, allocations for the ARP monies so that we got, at least we've got a spreadsheet now that tells us where we're at, what the projects are and what we're spending the money on. So it's a good deal. So any questions on on that? Everybody okay with checking that out with the ARP monies?
That was just to give a little background on this. Like when we did your budget for this year. That was, just to give a little background on this, like when we did your budget for this year, that was the understanding amongst us in the room that are making the budget, that in order to move that line item, the total that was in the equipment budget, up to salary and wage, to be able to allow for the new hires to come out of the general fund, that this was going to be a necessary transfer, that we had some flexibility, those art funds. So it's not like this got sprung on us tonight, this has been rolling around like since we started talking about budgets back in September, August even. So, yeah, July, June, yeah, May. This isn't like new news, this is just like getting this documented and getting that expenditure approved.
For what it's worth, my concern is because you said we have got more brought to somebody this month. About the money.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? It can have a motion that you call projects on the calendar. Motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Done motion to approve the hundred thousand dollars from the art fund for the police department equipment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Thank you.
No public.
How we done it, no one?
No, I changed this.
Okay.
Couple word. You know, as we look back on revitalization project, it was a wonderful project. And all of us participated, appreciate, you know, the town moving forward and taking that risk to, to move forward, to, to do what we've done as the town and has done, you have done for the town. Unfortunately, our contractor that we got wasn't up to stuff. And so we just needed to clean house a little bit. And as you look at the buildings, you know, we are, as the property owners, we signed a contract that we will maintain the appearance and the, the quality of that building at the time that it was turned over to us. Well, in the long run, we never had a chance for a punch list to go through and take a look at everything that, and have an input at the time that the contractor's always, was signed off in the end. So we're here just to kind of correct, hopefully through rent con and through those resources, get the resources to correct what didn't get done right. And has deteriorated since the work has been done and rapidly deteriorated. So I want to thank you on behalf of ourselves, Doug and I, the projects that we participated in, and hopefully for the others that were able to participate too. So we appreciate and applaud you for moving forward at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just, Scott, I just want to clarify the question about the tent at the Quanis Shelter. I'm the person from Friends of Paul's Park that coordinated all these groups to decorate. The Boy Scouts actually did the physical decorating for the Quanis. So the Boy Scouts put their tent there, and it says Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays on it, but I agree, from the road, it looks.
I just didn't want somebody living there. Any other comments?
I got one.
I'm going to pound you out.
Oh. This, kind of off the subject, but electrical bills, from time to time, we have people that can't pay their electric bills. We have a fund and we take donations, try to help people out. December the third is a magical date. There's organizations through private organization and government, if you apply for help by December third, it puts you on a list that we can't turn you off. Even if you get turned down for electrical assistance, then we can't turn you down. And I just wanted to get that date out there, so spread the word, you know, people that need help.
Thanks, Willie. Any other comments? Aw, come on.
Me, sure. Thank you to all the veterans too, I appreciate you guys. Is this all came up?
You don't need to look at them on the.
No, that's.
You need a list. There's a list of all the. I thought from the.
Oh, I gave it to the kids.
Yeah. You have somebody else that's all. She got the one up on fifty-third. Give me your.
No, no.
Would you please? For sure by that.
That was red.
Red. You do a lot of good work.
Hey, thank you for my.
I have to, buddy, I'm sitting there looking at you, I had to. He loves it, he loves it. Oh, oh, yeah.